Welcome, everyone. So tonight's Board of Education meeting is called to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, everyone. We are so excited to have so many people here. This is, uh, our agenda has some of, um, some of the best that we should be celebrating in our Waterford School District. So we are so happy to have each and every one of you here. So Secretary Sutherland, if you could please take roll call?
Members are present with the exception of Member Don Hugh, Member Gosman, and Member Forrest, who I believe will be joining us shortly.
Thank you. College, moving on now to the approval of tonight's agenda. Unless there are objections, the agenda will be approved as printed. Very good. Okay, so we have a really exciting start to our meeting here. We have three really amazing recognitions of achievement tonight. And first, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Yvonne Dixon. And Ms. Wagner is going to join Ms. Dixon up at the podium.
Thank you so very much. I would like for the students who are being recognized for the Advanced Achievement Endorsement to please stand and line up here against this wall. Thank you. We do have a full house. This is just wonderful to be able to see everyone here tonight. For everyone in the audience...
Come on down, don't be shy. Come on down. We're here to celebrate you.
Okay. I am very pleased to be before you, and I'd like to thank the Board for this opportunity to publicly recognize our students who are the recipients of the Waterford Advanced Achievement Endorsement. This endorsement is designed to acknowledge the challenging course of study that's been undertaken by these academically advanced students. This distinction affords the students the opportunity to earn an academic accreditation on their diploma, which will be recognized on their transcripts for college admission as an advanced program of study. The Waterford Advanced Achievement Endorsement Program is based on three pillars: scholarship, leadership, and citizenship. Under the scholarship component, students are required to have a cumulative weighted grade point average of 3.75 or higher in a rigorous curriculum which contains multiple honors, advanced placement, or dual enrollment courses each of their high school years. Citizenship. Students in this program are expected to conduct themselves as role models for their peers, both in school and in the greater community. Leadership. Students will be required to earn a minimum of 40 hours of community service by the end of their four years in high school. I am very excited and pleased to be able to recognize each of these youngsters. And the first one? Chase Burley. Some of our students are so busy that they cannot be with us tonight. And I believe that Dylan is one of those who could... Oh, he made it. I don't know how I missed that. I saw him last night with that hairdo at the other honors ceremony, so I'm glad you made it. Alana Kimerer. Hayley Mielmeier. Lilia Mojica. Aiden Reynolds. Nicholas Trang. We are all so very proud of them. I'm quite sure their parents are exceptionally proud. We, as the administration, and all of the teachers who poured into them for these last 12 years, we are so grateful to be able to recognize them publicly for all of their hard work. How about another round of applause?
Before you go, we'd like to say a couple, uh, we'd like to say a couple things. Well, first off, what are some of your plans? Tell us what comes next.
MSU.
Joe Green. Go white. What else?
MSU.
Playing baseball at Lansing Community College.
MSU as well.
San Antonio.
Fire up chips.
Go to MSU.
Um, well, as an MSU faculty member, really happy, really happy. Thank you. Listen, we are so incredibly grateful for all of your hard work. We are so proud. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I know I have, uh, I want to invite you all up to have a little picture here. I know Sarah might want to snap a little photo of all of them up here. We'll get out of the way, so it's not, uh, we're not here. So why don't you come on up here and let's, uh, let's take a photo here.
While they're organized, and I would like to say that Sophia Santia could not be with us tonight, but I wanted her name to be announced so that she could be recognized for her achievement as well.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. And in honor of staying where everyone's going to school, Sophia is going to the University of Michigan, so that's where... She'll be going to U of M.
Will our Seal of Bilinguacy recipients please take a moment to line up as well? Thank you. We have a big crew tonight.
And for our audience following along at home, this is Mrs. Jessica Ristich, the ELD consultant at the podium. And I'm gonna join Mrs. Ristich down there. Shake some hands.
Thank you for your patience. We are excited to have so many students come tonight to be honored for the Seal of Bilinguacy. We just need a second to get organized. Thanks for making space for them back there. All right, so good evening. I am so happy to be here tonight to help recognize our seniors who have earned the Seal of Bilinguacy. This year, a record-high number of 35 outstanding WSD students have achieved this award. This exceptional group has demonstrated a commitment to embracing and mastering language. Their perseverance in developing a high level of academic language and literacy in not only one, but two languages has set them apart. Because of the skills these students have worked hard to develop, many doors will open for them. Colleges and universities will view the seal as a symbol of excellence. Prospective employers will see it as a sign that these students are ready to thrive in a diverse job market. Waterford School District and the greater Waterford community should be very proud of these bright superstars. It's truly an honor to have this talented group of young people representing our district and our township. So as we prepare to recognize each student individually, I want to introduce you to three of my teammates from the English Language Development Department. We have Mrs. Yami Rowe. We have Mr. Tony Sanchez. And we have Mrs. Virginia DeLeo. So it's really important that these three are here to help celebrate tonight because not only do they do such an amazing job promoting the seal in each of their buildings, but they're really there every step of the way, from the advertisement to the organizing to the assessing. So really, big thanks to these three for all of their hard work for students. And Mrs. Rowe will now recognize the Seal of Bilinguacy recipients from Durant.
Jasmine Durant Gonzalez. She couldn't come today. Alondra Gomez. She's not here today. Emily Hernandez Cruz. Carlos Luna Prieto. Evelyn Lopez Lopez. Eduardo Marroquín Tecun. He couldn't come today. Michelle Mendoza.
Now, before we welcome Mr. Sanchez up to the microphone to acknowledge the students from Kettering, I do have a special story that I would like to share. In 2018, uh, 2018 was the first year that Michigan adopted the Seal of Bilinguacy. And Waterford was quick to jump right on it and figure out how we could honor our students and help them earn the seal right away. Well, in 2018, Mr. Tony was a senior at Mott High School, and he was one of our very first Seal of Bilinguacy recipients in Waterford and in Michigan. And now he's here. After some time at Oakland University, he's come back to us. He's employed as a bilingual parent resource assistant. He's inspiring our students, thinking about getting his teaching degree. And I just think that's pretty cool.
I'll do have to make, I'm a little envious because I had to not get recognized in this manner back until 2018. However, it does not compare how proud I am to recognize these fallen students from Kettering. Eric Cobos Barranza. Jordan Darren. Sochil Mexicano Martinez. Veronica Startsen. Isabel Virdio.
And now we have Mrs. Virginia DeLeo to recognize our Mott Seal of Bilinguacy recipients.
Guadalupe Acosta. Armando Álvarez. Pamela Avila. Adrián Bravo. Pierre Callan. He's not here today. Melania Contreras. Abraham De León. Ulisa Duarte. He's not here. Marshall Durant. Ryan Espaza. Osmar Felix. Carlos García. Jesús González Núñez. Eric Guillén. Jasmine Hernández Vidal. Gisele Martinez Gaspar. She's not here today. Madeline Martinez Montes. Julissa Mora González. Kerani Morales Martínez. Not here. Andrei Narváez. Herentida Ramos Saucedo. Ricardo Sanchez. Not here. Jasmine Sandoval Ramirez.
Thank you, thank you.
Really quick, this is amazing. Should we invite all of our Seal of Bilinguacy recipients to come on up here for another picture? We've got a lot of parents with cameras out, so we should make sure we capitalize on the moment here. And congratulations, this is incredible. Just amazing, amazing work. Congratulations.
Come down one row.
Feel free to get up if you want to take a picture closer up. And scoot in a little bit closer over here outside.
Like I said, we have so much here to celebrate in Waterford School District and really happy now to celebrate our Waterford Foundation Teacher of the Year. So we'd like to invite April Lennox to join Member Sutherland up at the podium. So this evening, we are very, very excited to celebrate Havland Elementary School teacher April Lennox, who was na-- yeah, let's do it again. April was named the 2024 Waterford Foundation Teacher of the Year. April has been teaching elementary school in Waterford since 2001 and currently teaches fourth grade at Havland. She believes that building relationships and making connections with students is the secret to student success. As a Waterford School District graduate, April also feels it is very important to give back to the community, she says, provided her with an excellent education. April was one of seven outstanding elementary educators nominated for this award and honored at the Education Excellence Reception hosted by the Waterford Foundation on Monday evening. She will also receive free use of a vehicle of her choice from Lunghammer. And we're now going to show a brief video highlighting the award.
All right, well, boys and girls, I don't know if you remember, but we were here last Tuesday, wasn't it? Well, you guys were outstanding. And I heard you wanted us to return, so we brought some of our friends because Mrs. Lennox has been selected... Stop. Uh, as Waterford Foundation's Teacher of the Year. What an honor. My family was incredibly keeping this secret because I had no idea, absolutely no idea. I would tell you that two of my little people in my family are not very good secret keepers. So they did a fantastic job of, um, keeping it from me until this morning when I watched the door open and many people walked in.
She's always put her heart into this job. She has done so much, you know, for her family, the kids, all of that, with all her students. You know, she's just beyond anything that I can tell her to say. It's a special kind of person to be a teacher. And she definitely is.
Well, she puts a lot of effort into her work. And it, and she always comes home and she tells us about her day. And she, um, always gets her work done in very, um, very kind and caring and takes very, you know.
She's so very ambitious. She puts 100% into every day. She also taught in all the different sites. I'm just so happy that she does this all herself.
What I enjoy most about teaching with the kids, it's not just me being the person that's teaching every day. I went from them. They teach me. They keep me young. They keep me hip. You said I'm hip. Um, and I enjoy just being with kids.
She's really kind and caring about, like, how people learn and take their time in learning things.
Instead of just, like, teaching normally, she just, like, makes it fun. And every even time I do mistake, she says something else. And one time I go to see, and on my test, she put great. I'm only paying for that.
Not only is she recognized by Waterford Foundation and the school district as being an outstanding educator, she gets a car.
What a great opportunity to recognize excellence in teaching and learning. We appreciate Waterford Foundation and we appreciate Lunghammer for your partnership in recognizing and, you know, giving our teachers a couple of year lease on a vehicle of their choice. And what a better way to support Waterford students and families than to support their teachers.
I'm honored to represent our district this way. I was in great company with a lot of other nominees, a lot of fantastic teachers and teachers that were nominated. We are a lovely entity to have so many great teachers.
On behalf of the Waterford School District, we first want to thank the Waterford Foundation for this incredible program and Lunghammer Chevrolet, Lunghammer for their, uh, for their partner, community partnership. Most of all, we want to commend and honor and thank you for the amazing work that you do. You change our schools, you change our community, and you change the lives of every student that you touch. During the, during the dinner to honor the Teacher of the Year, there were several other nominees who, when you see all of these amazing teachers and teachers from the past and when you're in the district, Waterford is blessed with incredible master magic teachers. And April Lennox is an amazing example of that. And so we have a little certificate and a swag bag. Also want to thank your husband for the cheese it runs. That was such a great story. She, she had the most beautiful speech when she, when she accepted the award, talking, she's very humble and just talking about how you can tell how much she pours into it and that she brings her family into it as well. She was talking about the night before, you had to run out and get cheese it. So anyway, um, so congratulations on this well-deserved, extraordinary honor. And we're so proud of you. Thank you.
So before we move on to public comment, many of you need to get out of here and go celebrate. So, um, we're gonna take two or three minutes. If you want, uh, go out there, celebrate, take some more photos. But we are so, so proud of everything that our Advanced Achievement Endorsement recipients have done, our Seal of Bilinguacy, and our amazing April Lennox, Waterford Foundation Teacher of the Year. So much to celebrate here in the Waterford School District. Uh, and this is a great, a great meeting. And I think reminds all of us Board members why we're here. So congratulations again. Have a great time tonight.
I was gonna say, how you doing? Oh, you're just amazing. I'm still, I'm still reliving your beautiful speech that you gave. It was just so heartfelt and so humble. It was much deserved. Congratulations. Thanks for all you do for our kids. Yes.
Ten years. I was like, oh, I haven't realized.
All right. Colleagues, we are now going to move on to public comments. And I have one green card. Craig Blomquist. Craig, please be. No, I'm kidding.
Nothing abusive, obscene.
Mike, look over there. Over there. Over the last few months, as I've reflected on my 34 years in the Waterford School District, I'm sorry, I have fully realized that this has been so much more than just my job. This has been my life. I got married working in this district. My kids were born and raised in Waterford. I've lived in Waterford pretty much my entire adult life. I have been shaped and nourished by my experiences here in Waterford. I am so grateful for everything that I have been given by our community and by our school district. Sorry. Mike, you cut me off at the three. I certainly hope that my friends and colleagues knew way, way before tonight how much I have appreciated them, needed them, loved them. But in case I haven't told you, I plan to tell some of you tonight. I apologize if I missed somebody. To Stu Threlle, my very first principal, who took a chance on me back in September of 1990, convinced he had not made up his mind about me until I called him on the phone and I swear I pulled him out of another meeting, who taught me to avoid at all costs the words "see me" in a mailbox. To Mary Lynn Kraft, my first teaching mentor, who I am told said to Stu, "We need some more male teachers in the social studies department." Without her, I wouldn't be here today. She taught me the importance of building relationships with students and with my colleagues. To Ray Nestor, who saw something in me and who asked me back in 2000 to be an interim assistant principal. I never planned then on being a principal. I certainly didn't plan on being here more than 20 years later, but I am grateful to him. To Von Dixon, my first partner, my sounding board, my mentor, until she left me for Pierce. And then I followed her a few years later to Crary. And she again has always provided advice and support to me. I will always miss you. To the four office managers that I have worked with over the years, Jackie Watt, Sue Bartle, Cindy Wyatt, and Andrea Motta. Thank you all for listening and advising and supporting me over the years. You have been the real bosses and school moms. You're the backbone that made Mott, Crary, Durant, and now Mott again such a special place to work. You have no idea how much pride these four ladies take in making sure that everyone on their staff has their needs met so they can meet the needs of our students and our staff. Thank you. To the Wald Lake School District, thank you. Thank you for offering the Wald Lake Northern Job to Greg Diamond instead of me. I have certainly second guessed a lot of decisions in my lifetime, but deciding to stay in Waterford after that for my entire career from that point forward has been a decision I have never regretted. To John Silvery, superintendent, who gave me the first opportunity to lead at Durant. My years working with our at-risk students at Durant were some of the most rewarding years of my career. He also gave me the opportunity to just be my kid's dad and not their principal. Everything they earned over the years, they earned on their own, and I am grateful. To Scott Lindberg, thank you for the opportunity to come back here, to come back to home to where I finished, to finish my career where I started, to come back to the school I've always called home. I just wish I hadn't donated so much of my Mott spirit where before coming back. To Lisa Eldridge, thank you for always listening, for complimenting me, and also for staying positive when I made mistakes, a lot of them. But most of all, thank you for always asking about my mom and dad over these last few very difficult years. I want to thank you for arguing with me about the difference between minimally effective, highly effective, and effective. And I would like it on the official record, I think I've been effective. To the board, I've known so many of you for many years. Thank you for having faith in me. Thank you for allowing me to serve our community. Central admin, and I know I'm going to miss a lot of names, Nadine, Darren, Elizabeth, Susan, I know I'm missing. Thank you. You have all helped me make, make me so much better as a building leader than I could ever have been on my own. To the thousands of students, staff, and parents that I've had the opportunity to serve, thank you. You have all enriched my life for so many years. In large part, I am who I am because of my experiences with you all. I do apologize if I don't always remember every name, every face that I bump into at every place I go in Waterford. But please know that you are a part of me and I take you with me everywhere I go. I can never thank you enough. Thanks, Mom, for showing me that being a public school teacher is the most rewarding job of all. Thank you, Dad. For teaching me kindness, dignity, and how to treat others with grace. To my daughter Kate, Mott class 2016. To my son Andrew, Mott class 2017. I am so proud of you both. I'm so inspired by both of you. And I'm so grateful that as I get older, if I get into legal trouble, my son will get me out of it. And if I have a hospital, my daughter will get me out of there. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to hold you up as examples of the outstanding education you can receive from our school district, from Stepansky to Knudsen to Cooley to Pierce to Mott. I have loved watching you grow every minute. Lastly, to my wife Liz, thank you. Thank you for not acting jealous as I went to at least 25 proms without you. Thank you for understanding that Fridays, I was going to be gone because that's football night, that Tuesdays and Fridays all winter are for basketball, and for knowing that we were going to miss a lot of dinners in May for honors nights, grad events, spring concerts, and so much more. I'm not sure you knew when you married me almost 30 years ago that you were also marrying the Waterford School District. She should have known to be fair because most of my friends at the wedding were also teachers at Mott. But thank you for loving me, laughing with me, and taking this journey with me. The quote green day, thank you, Waterford. Thank you for the time of my life. One last thing. I, I will be leaving with my family before you actually vote. Please say yes. I'll miss you all, but please say yes on that.
You have an option.
Pretty sure that's like a mic drop.
Yeah, it's good.
I'm not sure how we go on from here.
Is anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Congratulations, Craig. All right, moving on now, colleagues. Unless there are objections, tonight's consent agenda is approved as presented.
Doesn't he have a contract?
I, I do not have an objection to the consent agenda, but I do want to mention that I believe our, our own Lisa Eldridge is also on this list. And I, when we go through the consent agenda, I don't want to breeze by this one. I know that we will have an opportunity to honor you, but as with Craig, you have been made a lasting and indelible mark on Waterford Schools. You have been the go-to person in all things, teaching and learning and beyond. And we are in awe of the contributions that you have made and we are filled with gratitude for your service to the Waterford School District. So we, we are not allowed to vote against. I mean, I guess we could, but I don't think changes anything. But, but please know how incredibly grateful we are for all that you have done and for the leadership that you've provided to the Waterford School District these many, many years.
Want one of those too?
I didn't know we had that power.
They, they, they might just go running out the door anyway.
Yeah, but I just.
All right. Again, so much to celebrate here in the Waterford School District. But let's, colleagues, move on now to our information item. A couple of them tonight, but we'll start off with our summer tax collection fees. Assistant Superintendent Elka, welcome.
Thank you very much. Not really sure what we can say to beat that, especially when we're talking about a very staid subject now. So I'm joined by Amy Davenhart, our Director of Finance, as part of the process of collecting our local tax revenue. That's part of the operating village that we use to fund our operations. We contract with the local tax authorities to collect on our behalf, and we are charged by them a per parcel fee. So as we do every year, we come forward with this information for the board to approve. And I'll have Amy talk a little bit more in detail.
Okay, so basically you can see with the five municipalities that we have here, the biggest thing is, is that most of these contracts are multi-year contracts. So you'll see they're between three and five years. There is one contract that's just a flat fee, just a total dollar amount. You'll see the tax collection for 23, 24, and then you'll see the estimated collection cost for 24, 25. You'll see that both of those are the same. We do not know the per parcel in each township, in each municipality. So once we do get those numbers, we will update it. We're not sure if we'll have them before, before the next meeting when you approve it. But if we do get them, we will update it.
College comments or questions we have about our summer tax collection fees? Member Sutherland, please.
So is it that you don't know the number of parcels or you don't actually know the actual cost per parcel?
Just the number of parcels.
Number of parcels, okay.
You can see both the per parcel costs are the same.
Yes, so there's, I was going to say, so there's been no increase year over year for those contracts.
Remember, remember 23 was the first year. So when they went from 22 to 23, there was some slight increases. But 23, 24 to 24, 25, there.
And that is one reason that we do the multi-year, so we know what those costs will be ahead of time.
College, other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. College, moving on now to information item B, our purchase of esports machines. Skachi, welcome.
Thank you. So we're bringing forth an information item of the purchase of 20 esports machines for our high school unified team. This year, we started an esports program and utilized some machines that we had to see how the program would work, what we needed to adjust. One of the things we knew was going to be the purchase of the machines. So as you can see, we are requesting a purchase of 20 machines through People Driven Technologies, which is a RBC Save 2024 contract bid vendor. We are also looking at the purchase of 20 curved gaming monitors, which provide the opportunity and the graphics that the students would need to be successful in the program, and as well as an upgrade to the five-year warranty. Typically, our machines all come with three-year. Knowing that gamers tend to use their machines pretty substantially and that these machines cost a little more than your average, we wanted to upgrade to the five-year. and that these machines cost a little more than your average, we wanted to upgrade to the five-year. And especially given the cost of what that would cost, we saw that as a good avenue for us. So the total cost would be $37,567.80. The funding source would be the 2020 bond. And we would ask for approval at the next board meeting. And there is approximately a 30-day lead time for these devices at this time.
Can you tell us a little bit about how was our pilot this year? How was the launch?
So the launch was really good. We had about 30 students participate. We typically had 20 machines running each day, so some kids came one day for a game, some kids came for another. We also have Nintendo Switches that run during this program as well. The machines that we were using and we made work for this year are older machines, there are older CAD machines. They're about seven years old, so in the gaming world, they are ancient, for lack of a better word. So we made that work this year, but knowing we would want you to expand this program. Because the truth of the matter is, if you're not familiar with esports, the scholarship opportunities it would provide our students are endless. The one thing with these devices is I'm fortunate to have a colleague on the state programming for esports and they work with Ferris State. So these are the ones that Ferris State recommends and they are one of the number one esports universities in the state of Michigan at this time, so.
Member Sutherland, please.
Not really relative to the, I didn't know we had an esports team, to be honest with you. So do they compete competitively with other districts? You said, it says here that it's a unified team, meaning?
It's Mott and Kettering students. They are housed out of Kettering. They compete, yes, at the state level. We compete also in a local level too. It is a two-season sport. It happens in the fall and then it's considered winter, but it really rolls into the spring. We started it this year. It has been, a lot of kids want to take part in this. So we know by offering 20 and at five days a week and the way we split it up, we would be able to fit what we need.
Do you happen to know how many kids participate now?
Currently, about 30.
30?
Yes.
And so you're upping that by maybe 100? If it's 20 times five?
It depends. So most kids typically are there two to three days a week. It depends on what game runs on each day and it also depends on the schedule with the competitive schedule.
But the 20 feels like the right number?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Patricia, please.
It is video gaming. It is actually played, I know, I know. But I will tell you, the amount of scholarship opportunities behind this, if we don't take part, we really want our students to be able to grab these scholarships.
This is the type of stuff that like drone work, stuff like that?
So drone is a different thing. So this is literally?
But on video games.
It's a video game. So it's a computer-based video game or Nintendo Switch video game. One, trying to think of one you worked with.
I wouldn't have a clue.
Okay.
It's not Pong.
It's not Pong, yeah.
No, it's not. Although you know it could.
And I was terrible with that one, I hated video games since then.
But it's one of those things that's been a grassroots thing, especially at the state level. And it's expanded so much in the amount, like I said, of scholarship opportunities for our students. We're talking multimillion dollars in gaming scholarships. And the students don't have to be majoring in gaming. They can major in engineering but have an esports club. At Michigan State, there's an esports club, my son's a part of it. But he is not a gaming major.
But you can major in gaming?
He was good.
Yep.
That's a major.
Yes.
So that you'd be a design, I'm assuming you'd be coding?
It has to do with game design and graphics, yeah. But it is.
Not playing, just?
I know at Michigan State, they built an auditorium for esports.
It's amazing.
College of Commerce and Science.
There are other school districts nearby, I think Wild Lake?
Wild Lake participates. Clarkston started a team this year just when we did. There are others around the area. We also compete with Aben Down's team. The nice piece is with this opportunity is you can compete with students from anywhere. Like this year, we competed with a team up in Kepaska. Because it doesn't really matter where you're at because you compete from your site. Now, when you go to the state level, then state games are at Oakland University this year. I don't know where they're set to be next year. Then you travel. But otherwise, it provides that opportunity. It's quite amazing. I would encourage, as the season starts this year, I'll get you guys the schedule. You are more than welcome to come over to Kettering to check it out because it's quite amazing to watch.
Member Torres, please.
What games do they play?
It depends. So on the Nintendo Switch, they'll play Smash Brothers, if you're familiar with that game. It's basically like a wrestling competing game, kind of.
Are there sports games sold that they play?
There are some, yes. The kids essentially get to pick. So there's a set number of games and then we look at what kept going at the competing level at that season. And then the students get to pick which games they're utilizing.
So then we play other teams across the state? And then, so how do you determine who wins?
So there, it depends on the game.
Who does this smash?
Sometimes it's a point-based system. Sometimes it's just a matter of if you won the game, then you move on. If you don't, so it's more of a ladder-based system. It really depends on what the competitive competition is.
Are we any good at it? It's Waterford's record.
We have some kids who are very good, yes.
Thank you.
Member Sutherland, please.
I'm going to be the old person in the room again. But do, this is limited to after-school?
It is.
Okay, so the room that houses all of these computers and monitors, there's no other purpose for them educationally? It's a sporting, esport, extracurricular room that we have available?
Currently, yes. Yes, it will be in the same spot at Kettering that it is right now, which used to be our 101 lab. Which essentially, I don't want to say has become obsolete, but since we've gone to one-to-one, has not been utilized. Now, at Kettering, we have a 101 and a 103 lab. They utilize 103 for instruction, for testing, for other purposes. But the 101 lab hasn't really been utilized. So that's why we saw this year, especially as an opportunity to grab that and see if it worked, how it would work before we put the investment forward. So that's why we're at the point now that we really, if we're going to continue the program and be successful, we need to do the best in the program.
Member Donahue, please.
Yeah, esports is really taking off through the state, actually through the nation. And they've actually, it's even come down to the middle school level. And on Saturday, I was up at Michigan State University in Hubbard Hall where I started my, well, a lot of things. And so, but that was where the middle school state championship was. And my middle school team was there and we placed fourth in the state. And, but it's the second year of doing it. And at that level, it's middle school level, it's Mario Kart, it's Rocket League. And Smash Brothers is at that. And then, and then I'm not even sure what they're doing like at the high school level. But it's really taking off. And these machines are, I believe these are the same ones that are also at Lawrence Tech. We just took a tour there, our group. And I know that they were the curved monitors and they were Dell for it. But yeah, it's, you can do engineering, you can do construction trades and be part of the club. And earn your, if not offered straight out of high school, earn scholarship money once you're there. So it's pretty awesome for these kids.
Any other comments or questions regarding esports?
I think if it supports education, allowing our students to have opportunities to get into college, universities, and help fund, I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, and one thing we've heard from a couple of the parents is these are kids who normally would be part of a club. And now they have the opportunity to be part of a club. And some of them are actually thinking about college now that weren't because of this club. And we know that with all other clubs. But this is, you know, this is the day and the age that we live in. And Pat just hit on the head, esports is, it's coming and it's soaring real quick. So we want to give it, we want to, yeah, we want our students to have the opportunity to like everybody else.
I just, I want to thank Elizabeth. So we started this without putting much money into it. We didn't know where the interest would be this year, but thank you for taking the lead on this. Lisa, thank you for your support. But again, we're opening opportunities for students that may not otherwise be in another club. That's so important, thank you so much.
You have no problem.
Great, well, colleagues, any other comments, questions? I think we look forward to the next update. It's great, thank you.
Can I get a picture of what they look like? You sent something, because I can't even imagine, it's not a console that I sit in, it's a?
It's an actual computer, but yes, I will send you guys pictures of that and I'll send you pictures. I have pictures from the MSU one and I have pictures from the Ferris State ones.
Just so I have an idea of what it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. All right. College, moving on now to information item C. So the Board of Education is in receipt of policy updates. These updates include general housekeeping to address language and updates from Niola, Volume 37, Number 1, in accordance with statutory changes. Board members are asked to review these updates in the coming weeks and reach out to Superintendent Lindberg or Ms. Megan Roberts with any questions prior to board action on June 20th, 2024. College, any comments or questions here regarding policy updates? Just qualify their first three. All right, excellent. Colleagues, that takes us to the end of information items tonight. Let's move on now to new business. And turn it over to Secretary Torres, please.
Thank you. New business, Superintendent's Recommendation 73-23-24. Notice of public hearing, proposed 2024-25 budget. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the newspaper notice, notice of public hearing on proposed 2024-2025 budget. I so move.
Thank you, colleagues, the motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions, please? Very good. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, the motion carries 6-0. Member Sutherland, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know, I did go to Oakland Schools on Tuesday evening. And thank you to President Ristich, who also joined me there. And we attended the Oakland Schools Board Meeting. And in that board meeting, I did go to the microphone as did President Ristich. I also sent an email that's significantly longer than what I could fit into three minutes at the board. I think if you guys are okay with it, I can read you what I said so that you know. And then we can talk about this resolution. So I'll read as fast as I can, I'll skip my introduction. But I have immense respect for the work you do. You are overseeing a budget that exceeds $370 million and are dedicated to impacting blah, blah, blah. I'm also asking for your help. Your constituent districts are struggling to staff and operate your center-based programs. The county's most vulnerable kids are at risk. They are entitled to receive a free and appropriate education, but with a consistent lack of special education teachers in Paris, students are not receiving the special services in a way that federal law mandates. We are hamstrung trying to provide services with virtually no support from Oakland Schools. The responsibility consistently falls back to the local districts. There are more kids needing services and your response is to tell us to open up more sections, despite our inability to adequately staff or support that. Let me be clear, this is not a Waterford issue, this is an Oakland County issue, and it is at a crisis level. We have been sounding the alarm for years and it has fallen on deaf ears. When we ask for help and support, your mantra over and over again is it is not within our philosophy to run center programs. By the way, they have said that to me on several occasions as well, as those are the exact words that they use. And yet I ask you, it is in your philosophy to run the Oakland Schools' technical campuses? How can this be? Oakland County is the wealthiest district in the state. In fact, Oakland County's per capita income exceeds $56,000, more than double the Michigan average at $25,000. And yet virtually every other ISD in the state is operating their center-based program. Genesee, Wayne, Macomb, LaPierre, Washinaw, they all do it. But Oakland ISD does not. Special education students come from all over Oakland County. Your website states, quote, Oakland Schools leads a collaborative effort to provide special education transportation as well as cooperative purchasing, blah, blah, blah. You are not leading the effort and you do not provide the day-to-day work, all the heavy lifting, staffing and getting buses in district to pick up kids, that is all left to the local districts. Our surrounding ISDs, including Monroe, Macomb, Livingston, they fully support and actually provide transportation. But Oakland County ISD does not. In fiscal year 2023, $63,700 from the special education budget was used for the superintendent of schools' salary, a significant portion. How can you possibly justify this? You are asking your constituent districts to approve a massive budget, which clearly disregards a large population of our students. The PA-18 millage of Oakland County taxpayers is for this purpose. And yet you, as the ISD, tell us it is not within your philosophy to run these programs? This is not responsible stewardship of public resources, nor is it ethical. It is not within our philosophy to run center programs is in direct contrast to your stated mission, serve diverse needs of schools. It is in direct contrast to your statement of purpose, every student, every day. It is in direct contrast to your belief statements. It is about service. Education is a shared responsibility. Ethical behavior is everyone's responsibility. And it is not within our philosophy to run center programs is in direct contrast to your credo. I implore you to reconsider your philosophy. Enough is enough. Oakland Schools needs to stand up and be part of the solution. Our schools deserve better, our community deserves better, and most importantly, our students deserve better. So with that?
Did everybody stand up?
Yeah. Well, there were a lot of other things and Mike touched on some of the other, this was just because we had three minutes focused really on the special education concerns. But there are other concerns and examples that we also brought to light. And so because we are voting on that budget tonight, I would like to make the motion that here, per the Michigan School Code, Section 380.6242, the Oakland School General Fund Budget must be presented to Oakland County's 28 school districts by May 1st each year. Accordingly, this board has received the fiscal year 2024-2025 proposed budget documents. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution in disapproval of the Oakland Schools' fiscal year 24-25 budget due to the lack of support allocation for center-based programs, transportation, staffing adjudicated, youth programs, as well as funding and material supports to local districts. And I so move.
College, the motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions, please? Member Wagner.
I just want to say thank you so much for that. That was such a great summary of how we've been feeling for so long. And I am grateful to you to bring that voice to that board and to you as well. I know we don't know exactly what your words were, but I'm sure they were very close to what Joan was saying. And it is mind-blowing, it is mind-blowing that they do not support their districts the way that all the other ISDs do. So I'm hoping that they heard your words and that it did not fall on deaf ears. But thank you, that was so perfectly said and exactly what we've all been voicing for so long.
I did give them screenshots as well of websites for other ISDs and then Oakland Counties. And I said, accurately, there is no mention of a single special education program on the Oakland Schools' website. And then I gave their screenshot. It's accurate, so.
Member Torres, I believe.
I know we've been raising this concern with them for several years now. Have they given any answers or have they engaged at all? I know they probably did during public comment, but have they engaged at all?
Disappointingly, no, but not surprisingly. So what I'm hopeful is that in the day-to-day, that it starts a conversation. At least they know people are paying attention. And when it was brought to my attention, thank you, that they literally pulled almost $70,000 out of the special ed funding to pay the superintendent's salary when they literally do nothing to support special education. And that is just another indication, those are real dollars, that is money that could be helping kids. And you've, and I know how budgets work, I get it, I get it. You've got different buckets of money, but you feel good about taking that money to use this for the superintendent's salary when you're not providing services? So I just was really mortified by that.
Have there been any other school districts that have jumped out?
I know there are other districts and I'm actually thinking weirdly that when we're at the MASP conference, that I will try to talk to other school districts. I was asking some of our administrators where there are center-based programs and where there might be. Because I think everybody's frustrated, it's gotta be reaching a fever pitch with some of our other districts too. So I don't know, this is just another voice, you know, when boards speak up. I know that administrators have spoken up, I know that superintendents have spoken up. It's my hope that at some point you have, they have to hear you. They have to hear everyone, so.
And just for those of you that might have been following along at home, we have a couple really concrete examples of times when we read, I mean, that the board knows about, I'm sure there's many more. But when we had the awning in front of KMS was failing and we asked for help. And that help was not provided. I believe they said we could reallocate some funds to pay for ourselves. When, over the last year and a half, when we were seeing our staff turnover at such an alarming.
an alarming rate, when there was panic that we wouldn't even been able to have opened the doors at KMS, we asked for help, and we received none. And so those are two really concrete and visible examples of when we've asked for help in administering these county-based center programs, and they fell on deaf ears. And I don't even know what the conversations were like among administrators, but I know what that's like as a board member who expects that all of our students have a world-class educational experience and all the opportunities that they deserve when this ISD, three and a half miles down the road, they don't help. That raises some questions. And again, I know we talk about Oakland Schools every year. You know, parents will sometimes say, "Mike, why do you spend so much time talking about Oakland Schools? Why? Why?" And when I have a hard time making that rationalization, I think it points to...
If I could speak to that. You know, one of the things to keep in mind is that our programs we operate benefit many other districts. So when we don't have the staff to open up certain programs, not only do we suffer from our own students, but other districts do too. So it's not just a Waterford thing. And so yes, just to politely say, we've had multiple pointed conversations with the ISD.
And this may be a very basic, naive statement or question, but what if we just said we weren't going to run it? I mean, truly, I mean...
We've suggested that, but we do have a building. And again, we do need the programs for a number of our students as well.
But... Yes, Member Patricia.
I just want to thank Joan, the way your words... They just touched me. You get the point across. There was not one single F-pom in there. So again, I can't argue without something like that.
It was the unspoken piece of it.
But it's just, I thank you for that. You're just so pedantic. But thank you for your ability to get the point across very clearly, very professionally. And I'll go after it. I'll follow you. Just a little bit of emphasis on this.
For colleagues, I will say that every year at this time, we sort of, we have a sort of rallying cry. And I really think, and maybe we could put it on another meeting's agenda to talk about this, to sustain some of the energy, because we can go to their meetings. As Joan and I were there, I thought to myself, "We need to come to these meetings." So maybe we can add that to our calendar as a useful reminder to the board, but maybe we do need to have this as another point of discussion, because these are... The importance of these programs can't be overstated, but we have to make sure that we have that from the ISD. Colles, other comments or questions? And as a reminder, the motion on the table is to approve the disapproval of the Oakland Schools'...
The voting here is...
Correct. Correct. So Oakland Schools would say they did not approve our budget. Other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you, Joan. Treasurer Donahue, please.
Superintendent's Recommendation 75-23-24, the IA Okuma Budget. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the IA Okuma Budget, our campus 24-25 Budget. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The IA Okuma Budget Resolution has been moved and supported. Were comments or questions? Almertor?
Just how many kids do we have at the IA Academy? Usually we have less kids there than we have spaces, correct?
Correct. We have about 39 students that attend, and we have about 60 spaces for students.
39, and then 60, okay. And then we only pay for 39?
Correct. We only pay for the students that attend, and if you have a student that, for whatever reason, attends one semester, so the whole year, we only pay for one semester.
Do we see... Is that number pretty... Does it stay the same or does it go up, down?
The last couple of years, we've been about 40, 39, just as a slight point.
So it's pretty about the same. And then, yeah, this has always been a thing for me, the international backfire programs. I think they're really great. I would love to see Waterford get its own standalone at some time. I know the consortium, and that school is great academically. It's one of the best in the country. But I know a lot of students are deterred from going to it because even though you're still part of the district, you don't... You're not... You're away from the district as opposed to like a Wald Lake or Clarkston where the actual school is in the school, so you're still a part of the community. But it really is an opportunity for a very deep type of learning and education for kids. So I am thankful that we participate and give that to students an opportunity, but it would be nice to see our own standalone program here. Thank you.
Speaker Patricia, please.
Are we... Are you okay with this, Pat? What the total amount is and stuff?
Other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries six, zero. Treasurer Donahue, please.
Superintendent's Recommendation 76-23-24, Professional Audit Services. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve a five-year contract with YO and YO for professional audit services. I so move.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and supported. What comments or questions do we have about our professional audit services? Member Sutherland.
We've been with YO and YO for a very long time, as I recall. So you, after your whole assessment, you felt comfortable staying with them, and I want you to know how much I appreciate... It's probably really hard to pick the people who are going to pick at you. I mean, you're choosing, and I know they're very thorough, and I mean, that's the only one that I've ever worked with or through, so I wasn't familiar with the other ones. But I know they're not the cheapest, but there's not a big disparity in the heavy hitters there. So I want you to know how much I appreciate that you went through this exercise and that we're having a new contract for the place.
Yep. And as we talked about last time, you know, there was many factors that went into this. We had an evaluation tool that had nine factors on it. Can tell you those nine factors. I have the printout with me, so if anyone would like it after, you can have it. But there was many factors. So, you know, training and personnel in school districts, federal grant accounting, and number of auditing staff that do school districts, number of Michigan school districts that they audit. So there was... It was very close between the two that we were looking at, which was YO and YO and Manor Castarian. So we have never worked with Manor, but they do do 107 audits in the state of Michigan. YO and YO does 81, just as an example. Price of services obviously factored into it. And again, when we came to you last time and told you about this, that was one of the reasons that we did go out for an RFP on this. We wanted to see what the benchmarking was and if our pricing was competitive. So that was one of the reasons that we did do that. So there, you know, there were other factors, too. Their... Manor Castarian has six districts that are 7,000 students or more. YO and YO has four. You know, qualifications of their staff. They were neck and neck. They both consider what their principal or their managing partner... They were both 15 and 16 years, and then the managers were both five and six years. So very, very competitive. They both have an electronic, whether it be web-based or electronic system of how you get the information to them. So you upload all of your documentation to them, and then they use that documentation in the audit, and they check it off as they go. Involvement in other school-based organizations. So we talked about that last time, too. They were both with MSBO, ASBO, the National School Business Officials affiliate, MDE and MASB.
And I just want to point out that we're not doing this because we think that we want them to give money to state organizations, but we know by being involved in that, they get more information from the state, they get information from the auditors at the state, they get information about how to audit, what to audit. They give us information about with grants, what do we need to look at, what is the monitoring? So by being involved in these organizations, they help us improve our internal controls and how we account for things, and therefore obviously have better audits as well. So that's why we count that as so important, because a lot of the information we get about our day-to-day with grants or Gatsby's is through these organizations and the auditors who help them and help us and vice versa.
And they do send a lot of their younger auditing staff to those conferences and to MDE for different things. So again, like we said, the last time we went out for audit services was 2006. We've had YO and YO since then. They do offer additional services, both firms, whether that be IT solutions or, you know, just employee benefit plans, advocating services, fraud prevention, different things like that. And location. So Manor is in Lansing, and YO and YO, we get our auditors from Saginaw and Auburn Hills. You know, over the last four years, we've had turnover, so that is also a factor internally. We've had turnover internally in our business office, so that's also a factor. And over the last four years, we've cultivated a very good relationship with them. So it is something that we do look at. Changing over to a new auditing firm is a very large task. So it's something that we look at. They've provided us great Gatsby support, YO and YO has, with both 87 and 96. Those are the lease and subscription Gaspys that we've had recently. We've had stability with our auditing team. So since I've been here, which is over five years now, we have had the same auditing team.
And that's really helpful, because we do have a few programs that other districts don't. So by their familiarity with our programs, it can make the audit go a little bit easier. So having that consistency in their staff, because if they bring staff from another school, they're not going to know our CBS program, they're not going to know our center program. So having that information from having a consistent staffing also makes our audit go a little bit easier when we're talking, because we're not having to tell them how we run it before they decide how they need to audit us.
And we talked about this last time, too. The five-year contract gives us guaranteed pricing for the five years. We do have the ability to get out of it, but it does provide us with that guaranteed pricing for the next five years.
Other comments or questions, please? Member Sutherland and Member Patricia.
I love that you used a rubric. I mean, I do. I think that was really a spectacular way about going about it and making sure that there's a lot to consider, as you all, as you clearly did. So thank you again for that. Really appreciate that.
I just want to thank you for going out to have this done. It gives us that confidence, like, geez, are they, you know, $50,000? What would someone else be? And I wonder if there was one that was very low. Were they considered a very small group? What's their story?
Yes, they're a very small group, and we also found in the process that Raymond, which the state actually uses, I've worked with them, the MDE Serp audit. The state of Michigan has contracted with them for that audit. And what we found was on Raymond's, there were a couple asterisked, and it said that they contracted it out. And so I saw, I noticed a district on Raymond's that was also on Haven Group. So I'm guessing that Raymond uses Haven Group to contract out to.
Which is... I appreciate that Raymond does this, but I'm not sure I'm not an audit firm that does that. So that's just a private preference, but it was a surprise for us, because it wasn't something we were aware of, that this was something. But we've been fortunate enough to be in large enough districts that we would never have a contracted out, because we're just so large. So that is one thing. And the one thing that we got from bidding out versus, like, every year we always do within Oakland County and even at the state level, we always ask what everybody's audit fees are. But we also know that there's a lot of variability in it. We don't know how many grants that they're being audited on. We don't know what other programs. So this gave us an opportunity to actually look at what our costs would be from different firms. So like you said, it gives us an opportunity to really look at, are we in the ballpark? And we are.
For those following along at home, the audit services, these are the folks who are going to look over Sandy and Amy's shoulders as we do wrap up our books every year. They make sure all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. When you have the size budgets, we do the bond projects. All of those dollars have to be accounted for, and this is a firm, again, we pay to make sure that we come or that our district is doing its best work. So important work here.
And it is a state requirement that school districts are audited by external audit firms.
Every year.
So even though we don't have a choice whether we do, and we have to pay for it, it is required.
And I think it's more than just a call to the board.
A little bit of that. Well, yeah.
I had a question. The 107 and 81, you said those numbers, those were districts that they work with?
Those were districts that they audited as of June 30, 23.
Okay. So some of them would be duplicates then, or just separate individuals?
We have almost 700 school districts and charters, and each of them would require an audit.
So with Manor, do they... Is it like regional, or they both are in like metro Detroit area, or what?
I mean, Manor's in... Manor's main office is in Lansing, but they do districts... Yeah, they do districts across the state.
Okay.
But the majority of them are smaller districts.
Who does the majority of the districts, like in Oakland County? Is this a cross-spectrum?
I don't know. It's a cross-section, but for instance, I can give you the six that were over 7,000 that Manor does. Brighton, Forest Hills, Kalamazoo, Kentwood, Lansing, and Traverse City. And then the four that YO and YO does, Lance Cruz, Midland, Oxford, and Rockford. And as an example, Raymond does DPS Community, so the new district, and Ording, and Hungerford-Nichols does Huron Valley, Clarkson, and Rockford, of the ones that are relevant.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries six, zero. Treasurer Donahue, please.
I will always remember that it is YO and YO from now on. Somebody should have said it was a silent E on there, so, all right.
Well done, rookie.
Yeah, exactly.
I wasn't trying to correct you, so.
No, no, that was good, though. No, thank you. Superintendent's Recommendation 77-23-24, Purchase of Microscopes. Waterford School District Administration recommends the purchase of 82 Celestron TetraView LCD digital microscopes and six Wolf Digiview DVM 6.0 digital microscopes from Carolina Biological Supply Company in the total amount of $39,050.90. These microscopes will enhance the ability of high school teachers to deliver high-quality instruction to students using laboratory-grade equipment. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. Motion's been moved and supported. Were comments or questions we have about the purchase of advanced students or, excuse me, of microscopes? Member Sutherland, please.
These are the kind of purchases I love. I just love when we know they're going... Kids are going to be looking at them, they're going to have their eyes on them, and it's like real... I mean, this is super cool, so. Thank you for that, for all the information, all the detail here, and really excited to have these added into our science rooms. Awesome.
The price difference was a little bit larger than what I expected for just a... You might have liked it, or off the shelves, it's $99 or whatever it is, $33,000, $40,000, I guess, that much, but it's...
They're very different than the Fisher Price microscopes that you had, like, as a child. There are a lot of...
I liked my Fisher Price.
There are a lot of features to the microscopes, resolution, lighting, the displays. When we were in school, not to date myself, but we would rely on just what our eye could detect, and then we'd try to draw those pictures. But now we have an LCD display, so the student has a better view of it after they've stopped using the eye.
That fading thing.
Yes.
Now, but again, the difference between like $33,000 and $40,000... Now, but again, the difference between like 33,000 and 53,000, are these bid on the same ACME microscope or Fisher Price?
Well, the, well, the specification of what the minimum specifications are provided. Yes, and then they provide a price based on which brand they're able to provide that closely matches the specifications that are required.
Okay, so it's not the apples for apples. There are.
Absolutely. That explains it. Precisely.
Other comments or questions here? All those in favor, please, Mr. Fabrizio, here. Motion carries six, zero. Okay, Treasurer Donahue, please.
Superintendent's recommendation 78-23-24, social studies curricular materials for grades three, five and eight, 11. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of social studies curricular materials and digital licenses for grades three through five and eight through 11 from TCI for six years. The total cost is $487,294.50 with $306,464.50 to be paid by Esser Three Funds and $180,830 to be paid by General Funds, ISO move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. Motion's been moved and supported. Comments, questions? Member Sudlin.
Another exciting one. Where is grade six through seven in this equation?
Well, we were fortunate enough to purchase grade six through seven last year.
Okay, I didn't remember having that. So did, did we already have these same in social studies? Did we have, because it says for another six years.
Yes.
We already pay for six years.
Yeah, yes, we have had a relationship with TCI for multiple years. All of our textbooks have aged out and we also have to renew licenses.
Thank you. And then why did we not use all Esser funds? Is there a certain reason that we have to use some general funds?
Yes, we're not able to charge the licenses in future years to the Esser. We have to make the commitment, obligate all the Esser funds.
That's what I thought, like the hard copy papers, whatever we're getting can't, has to be consumed in the year that we bought it or not, or it has to be, can't. Because we're not, we're not paying for it this year. We're paying for that next year.
Correct, but Esser goes through 9/30 of '24. The problem is that we cannot charge any of the six-year subscription.
Right, right.
Because we won't be using it basically in that year.
Right.
And obviously, school starts in August of '24. But the part that we can charge to Esser is all the material.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So we maximize Esser to the extent that we can and the rest is general fund. Thank you so much.
Questions here? Member Torres, please.
Yeah, I was thinking the same. I remember that we had made a purchase, but so that would have been the sixth and seventh grade. So this is good for six years. So for six years, we have the license. So then the materials, as, as things change, with say government alive, right? If things change, so that, that information is then updated?
In the electronic, the digital version? And we would have access to the updated digital version?
So all the digital would be updated for the six years?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor, please, Mr. Fabrizio, here. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Six, zero.
Ooh, look at all this.
All right. Colleagues, that takes us to the end of new business this evening. It's now turn to public comments on non-action items. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the board on non-action items? All right, excellent. Board of Education reports, colleagues, who's got a report tonight? Member Petrusia?
First thing, a friend of mine, a lot of people, older, I guess, Jeff Merritt, just turned 70 years old. I don't know if anyone remembers the big boy. Jeff was the busboy of the big boy for 40 years. He was also a member of the Lions Club. I mean, and he just, he's a good guy. He kind of got on your nerves a little bit. But in Lansing, he was there for the fun, doing the different things. He calls to let us know how he's doing. He's just a fun, good guy. He's no trivia on just about anything. He's your guy. But he just turned 70. He used to watch the meetings. So I want to say, hey, got to work today, Jeff. I don't want to question him anymore. He was that one. Craig Wilkis, what can you say? Good man. Sorry, man, he runs, they're all great guys. In Parks and Rec, the Parks and Recreation Department, or for Parks and Recreation Department's tenure operation, operating village will be on August 6th ballot for renewal and restoration. 0.453 mills is a renewal. 0.047 mills is the restoration to restore lost village due to the Hiddley Amendment drawbacks. Total village would be 0.5 mills. This village is critical to the maintenance, operations and future growth of the Parks and Recreation Department. It represents more than half of the revenues the department receives. The Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for 16 parks and facilities in the township spanning more than 850 acres and offered more than 500 multi-generational programs every year. A residential home with a taxable value of $85,283 would pay approximately $42.64 a year. It's very important for our Parks and Rec meeting. What they do is phenomenal. The open space, everyone wants open spaces. 850 acres of parks being maintained. They have difficulties maintaining it all. Before, we had this village just 10 years ago. It was still on the township budget. And when we got the village, they basically, the money that we're getting, the township stopped giving us, one of them, like lottery money. Hey, you're going to have a bigger budget? No, we're taking this part away. You're still going to save your same budget. So it's, it's still a shoestring. They, they need all they can get. There's a lot of things happening with Parks and Rec. It's very busy for them. They have this OCC property is, you know, they're, they're trying to do something with that, but it's all contingent. None of that matters. We have to get the mill gas. So that's, I just want to put a plug out for them. We need that. It's 0.5 mills. It's, it's not. Is that all that I need? That's all that I wrote down.
Thank you, Rob. Other board reports, then? Member Wagner?
I just wanted to say, we're all listening publicly. Because I think most of you have attended and seen these things that have gone on in the community. I had the honor to attend both the Pierce Band Concert and the Waterford Mott Band Concert this past couple of weeks, as well as the Waterford Mott Senior Night. And it is always a joy. So if you ever get an opportunity to see a concert, to see a performance, definitely take the time to go see these kids perform. And it was also amazing to see our Waterford students, especially our Mott seniors, be honored. And so many of them with such high grade point averages and so many achievements and so many things that they've accomplished. And it was a very, very, very proud, proud night to be there and to see, and, and just to see their pride and their accomplishments. So I, if you get a chance, I think there's still a few concerts coming. I believe there's still an orchestra and possibly one of the choir concerts at one of the high schools. So if you get a chance, definitely check it out. If not, there's always the fall. So definitely check it out.
Torres, please.
I had an opportunity to go to the Teacher of the Year Award 2024. Member Petrusia and Sudlin were both there as well, as was Superintendent. It was, it was just an awesome thing to see, inspiring. Forty years it's been since they started that. And I got to sit at the table with a former Teacher of the Year. And I think it's really just awesome how we recognize all of the nominees. Because it really is inspiring when people value your work and show you the worth, especially for teachers. And I think that's, you know, it can be a thankless job. You do much more than just educate. You know, you're a social worker, you're a counselor, you're working with the parents. You're doing so much more than just teaching. So I, I think it's, it was just a really inspiring thing to see. The Mott Ceremony, I had an opportunity to go to that as well just to see the, the kids, you know, graduating, the talent that they have, the academics, to talk to a few of them and see where they're going. And then afterwards, they had the art ceremony. That was a really cool thing to see and the kids' work and how it's showcased. And I was actually going to send this to Petrusia because I got this email yesterday. They're going to be churning on the Brian J. Winston Memorial Fountain on May 21st. So as you know, it's former Waterford Board President, Dearborn Superintendent, and then the State Superintendent. It's a beautiful fountain right between the state Capitol and the state Supreme Court. I have the pleasure of working in Lansing and just about a week ago, I pointed at it when I was in my building and I told somebody, I said, hey, former school board president for Waterford School District, that fountain's named after him. So, but they're going to be churning it on for the official start of summer. It's going to be a ceremony for state employees to kick off the summer on May 21st. So I think that's, that's an awesome thing to hear his name, Raymond Lansing, and to, to remember him by churning on that fountain.
You sent it over, that's actually very.
Yeah, I'll send it over. I've been shot it.
He was a former student.
A former student. Sent it to the whole state.
Thank you, Member Torres. Member Donahue.
I just wanted to give a shout out. He's not here tonight, but Jim Beaver. I've had the chance for the last couple of weeks, go to the Michigan's School Safety Academy and to the, and then, that was a couple of weeks ago. And then, then last week, to the Great Lakes Homeland Security Conference in Grand Rapids. And both of those were very specific to school district safety. And Jim was there both times. I'm kind of, his position in Allen Park. And so I was there and so I got to sit with Jim on, on both of those occasions throughout the day. And we learned quite a bit. And it's just great to see, you know, Jim out there and learning everything that he can to make this school district safe. And we had some great conversations about, you know, different speakers and sex trafficking and school security and counselors and social workers and the need for them. And, and it was just a wonderful thing to be able to sit and have some dialogue with them. So I just wanted to do a shout out to Jim.
Really quick too, I wanted to thank Member Sudlin for going to the Oakland Schools School Board meeting the other night. Joan has been such an important liaison between our board, their board. And we've seen Member Sudlin's skill set and doggedness and making sure that those Oakland Schools folks are, are dotting their i's and crossing their t's. So I just wanted to thank Joan. And again, in our consent agenda tonight, Lisa Eldridge, what is there to say, Lisa? These last five years specifically, what you've been through, my goodness gracious. And what we've witnessed up here is nothing, I'm sure, compared to what you've experienced in Central Atlanta. We're just so thankful for everything you've done, everything you've given us. And thankfully, you're, you're leaving this place in pretty good shape. So congratulations. And I know there'll be more time to say lots of nice things about Lisa Eldridge, but I just want, maybe to close with that.
Superintendent Lindberg?
Right, President Richards, thank you. I would like to thank Fox Two Detroit Meteorologist Rich Luderman, who dropped by Bowman Elementary this week to talk about the role that science plays in weather forecasting and the tools he uses to predict weather. This visit aligned with Bowman's problem-based learning unit about weather patterns and changing seasons in Michigan. What a great opportunity for our students. Hey, as you know, the countdown to graduation is on and Waterford School District is celebrating our top grads who have achieved a 3.9 or above GPA. These students have shown exceptional achievements and we are proud that they will represent Waterford after graduation. Check out our social media pages where we will be highlighting these outstanding scholars. I'm also excited to announce that Havilland Elementary ELD paraprofessional Elisa Crabtree this week was selected by the Oakland Schools Education Foundation as the 2024 Oakland County Support Person of the Year for our crowd. We will have the opportunity to recognize Elisa further at the June regular meeting where the Oakland Schools Education Foundation will present her with a plaque, certificate of achievement and a $500 award. I'm also happy to share that Bowman Elementary Principal Leslie Walsh has been nominated by the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association for the 2024 Principal of the Year Award. Congratulations to Leslie and thank you for your exemplary leadership. And I would like to end with just a few comments about my good friend and colleague Lisa Eldridge. She's been here in Waterford 12 years, education for 36. Let me talk about a couple of the things that she has done just since I've been here in the last five years. The SAFE team has grown and that's benefiting our students and families. Problem-based learning I mentioned here was initiated by Lisa Eldridge. Over $4 million in new curriculum has been introduced and implemented. That is no, that is a huge undertaking. And you have led that in great fashion. We have implemented over $10 million in new technology. Who would have thought five years ago that we would have implemented a one-to-one initiative with all of our students? And most importantly, you've been a great partner. You've been a great colleague. You raise, you keep the bar high. If you want to know the real deal, ask Lisa. But careful, because she's going to tell you the real deal. But I've counted on that. I've appreciated that. We're going to miss that. You hold us accountable. You raise the bar. But you do what is best for students, day in and day out. On the weekends, Saturday at 5 o'clock, Sunday at 6:00 in the morning. Just an exemplary colleague. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lindberg. We're cleaning up on the awards this year.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't.
Go Waterford.
Yeah, go Waterford. All right. Colleagues, tonight's regular meeting is now adjourned. Please remain seated though, because we're going to move into a special meeting. So.